Welcome to the United States of America. The United States of America, the people of America, the citizens of America. Thank you. Allison, we have a roll call, please.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
Here.
Counselor Olson.
Here.
Counselor Novak.
Here.
Counselor Bartholomew.
Here.
Counselor Kupczynski.
Here.
Counselor Johnson.
Here.
Mayor Johnson II.
Here.
Next, we have a reading of proclamation. She gonna put it up? Kenzie? There we go. Native American Heritage Month, November twenty-second, November 2022. Whereas the history and culture of our nation has, have been significantly influenced by Native Americans and indigenous peoples and whereas the contributions of Native Americans have enhanced the freedom, prosperity, and global influence of America, of America today. And whereas their customs and traditions are respected and celebrated as part of a rich legacy throughout the United States. And whereas Native Americans have been moving stories of tragedy, triumph, and perseverance that need to be shared with future generations. And whereas Native American awareness week began in 1976 and recognition was expanded by Congress and improved by the President George H.W. Bush in August of 1990, designating the month of November as National Native American Heritage Month. And whereas in honor of National Native American Heritage Month, community celebrations, as well as numerous culture, cultural, artistic, and educational, and historical activities are planned annually across the nation, our nation. Now therefore, I, Alexander D. Johnson II, Mayor of the City of Albany, Oregon, do hereby proclaim November 2022 as Native American Heritage Month in Albany and urge all residents to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. And witness whereof, I here to, here to, here to, here unto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed the 26th day of October in 2022, Alexander D. Johnson II, Mayor. Counselor Carsten Bahag, would you please read the next proclamation?
Homeless Youth Awareness Month, November 2022. Whereas youth are identified as homeless when they live in an emergency shelter, share housing with others due to economic hardship, stay at motels, live in cars, parks, public spaces, tents, trailers, or other similar settings. And whereas as many as 2.5 million youth per year experience homelessness. And whereas runaway and homeless youth often flee conflict, abuse, or poverty in their homes. And whereas along with losing their home, community, friends, and routines, as well as their sense of stability and safety, many homeless youth are also victims of trauma. And whereas while trying to survive on the streets, youth are exposed to countless dangers with an increased likelihood of substance abuse, early parented depression, post-traumatic stress disorder, and vulnerability to being trafficked. And whereas they can become disconnected from educational systems and the workforce and do not have the skills and financial resources to live on their own. And whereas some youth are at greater risk of experiencing homelessness, especially those who have less than a high school diploma or GED, with a greater risk to those who are low-income, LGBTQ plus, non-white, or parenting. Now therefore.
I, Alexander D. Johnson II, Mayor of the City of Albany, Oregon, do hereby proclaim. Go back. November 2022 as Homeless Youth Awareness Month in Albany. And call upon residents to reach out to their local youth service shelters and nonprofits to volunteer support for the work they are doing in the community and to remember that homeless youth are kids in bad situations. And witness whereof, I here unto set my hand and the cause the seal of the City of Albany, Oregon, to be affixed this 26th day of October, 2022, Alexander D. Johnson II, Mayor. Extra Mile Day. Before we start this one, I want to let you guys know that two veterans are walking from Boston to Newport, Oregon, and they'll be passing through Albany after Thanksgiving on November 29th, approximately November 29th. So I'd like you to join me and welcome them to Albany. And so I'll keep you guys posted through city council meetings and let you know where they are. Right now, they're in Wyoming, and they're walking an extra mile to raise money for veterans. So Extra Mile Day, November 1st, 2022. Whereas this Albany community acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists when individual residents collectively go the extra mile in a personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas the Albany community encourages residents to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly with total effort, commitment, and conviction. And the Albany community, whereas the Albany community chooses to shine a light on, on and celebrate individuals, organizations that go the extra mile to make a difference and lift up fellow community members. And whereas the Albany community acknowledged the mission of the Extra Mile America to create 550, 550 extra mile cities in America and be proud to be, to port Extra Mile Day November 1st, 2022. Now therefore, I, Alexander D. Johnson II, Mayor of the City of Albany, Oregon, do hereby proclaim November 1st, 2022 as Extra Mile Day in Albany. And I urge each individual in the community to take, to take time on this day to not only go the extra mile in their own life, but also to acknowledge those who are inspirational in their efforts and commit, commitment to make our organizations, families, community, country, and world a better place. I, in witness whereof, I here to, unto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany, Oregon, to be affixed this 26th day of October, 2022, Alexander D. Johnson II, Mayor. Now therefore, I, Alexander D. Johnson II, Mayor of the City of Albany, Oregon, do hereby proclaim November 1st, 2022 as Extra Mile Day in Albany. And I urge each individual in the community to take, to take time on this day to not only go the extra mile in their own life, but also to acknowledge those who are inspirational in their efforts and commit, commitment to make our organizations, families, community, country, and world a better place. I, in witness whereof, I here to, unto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Albany, Oregon, to be affixed this 26th day of October, 2022, Alexander D. Johnson II, Mayor. Thank you. Next on the agenda is a special presentation by Mercy House International. Would you please come forward? Please don't give your address, just acknowledge that you're, yeah, thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here, Mayor Johnson, members of the city council, and guests. My name is Colleen Anderson, and I am the CEO of Mercy House International Incorporated and the boutique manager of Firsthand Seconds Unique Boutique on Second Avenue in downtown Albany. Joining me tonight is Annie Anger, our chief operating officer. We thank you for inviting us to introduce our fantastic nonprofit. Did you know that one in three women is impacted by domestic violence? And domestic violence is the leading cause of homelessness for women? That one in three, by the way, has gone up since the pandemic. It used to be one in four. Our nonprofit serves women and children in crisis due to domestic abuse, as well as other crisis situations. Our boutiques, Firsthand Seconds, and Sheiki Sheiki Bridal Boutique are the fundraising arm for the organization. We receive donations of women's and young women's clothing and accessories, and then resell them to raise the funds for our programs and our operating expenses. We are located in a historic building in downtown Albany and are currently working on the final piece of restoring our space to enhance the downtown experience. We remodeled the interior of the building and moved in in September of 2020. We are in the process of working with the Landmarks Commission to bring the facade of our building back to resemble the original look while bringing it more closely into the 21st century. We believe that we need to be good stewards of what God has blessed us with, and part of that is the restoration of our building. Our ethic is observable in the fact that we are financially stable and strive to operate in an ethical and faithful manner. Mercy House was founded in 2010 by Deborah Boulanger. For 11 years, we have served the Mid Willamette Valley. It includes closer to 12 years now. Over the years, we have operated two different safe homes. Currently, our focus has shifted to the multiple ways to help families in crisis. Due to staffing issues and other state and federal requirements, we no longer have a safe home. However, we have found a niche assisting with car repairs, rent, and utility assistance, and other emergency situations. Our assistance programs are accessed through an application and interview process to determine how we can best serve each applicant. We have also helped women to obtain clothing through our quarterly dollar sales and partnership with DHS through a program called Mercy's Closet, where DHS has purchased vouchers for people to come shop for interview clothing and things like that. Other programs we offer are Mercy's Garage, where we provide financial assistance for repair of vehicles and on occasion, receive donations of vehicles and gift them to qualifying applicants. We have a fund set aside for limited emergency hotel stays for those escaping domestic violence who are unable to access other help. We often coordinate with various agencies and other organizations in the area to assist those in need, and we are dedicated to remaining a stable resource for those who come to us in crisis. Ways to help us are volunteering, donating clothing and accessories, and monetary donations and sponsorships. We have qualified for a CARA grant and a Diamonds in the Rough grant for the work on our building, and we are currently operating a capital campaign to raise the remainder of the funds for the facade, which would be approximately $51,000. We thank you for your time and attention. Also, we have provided you with some materials that you can refer to this evening for more information. We have, yes, a cover page that describes us more in depth. Also, renderings of what our facade potentially will look like when we are finished with it. Feel free to call or come into the boutique if you have any questions.
That it?
Yep.
Counsel, any questions? I personally donate a lot of clothes there for my daughter growing up over time, and my wife's clothes as well. And I will tell you, I really appreciate the work you do.
Thank you.
I was sad to hear that Deb had, had retired, but I'm glad that you're here and Colleen as well.
Yes.
So thank you very much for the services you provide.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Any other questions, counsel?
I think my speech went a little quicker than I expected.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next, on business from the, um, business from the public, I have one speaker, Dr. Lawrence Erby. Ebi, we've met before. Yeah. Please, doctor. Three minutes, please, Kenzie.
To the Honorable Mayor, Mr. Alex Johnson, and members of the Albany City Council. I am Dr. Lawrence Ebi, more commonly known as Larry. When I came to Albany about 20 years ago from Ohio as a newly retired physician, I was interested in finding ways I could be involved in supporting healthcare in retirement in an area where I was not known. One day, I read in the Democrat Herald that then-Mayor Sharon Canopa, the City of Albany, and the Police Department were hosting a summit on homelessness. That is, when I first met Councilor Marilyn Smith, who graciously allowed me to attend, although the registration was already full. That was the beginning of a continuous connection with the issues of healthcare and homes for the unhoused to the present for me. During that time, I chaired the beginning of Love, Inc. as the Chair of the Board. I was the Chair of the Advisory Council for the IHNCCO for three years, and I followed that as Chair of the Lynn County Health Advisory Council for several years, and I'm currently on the, uh, Distribu- DST, Delivery Systems Dist- Transformation Committee for the IHNCCO. In all these positions, what always came to the top of the list as a barrier to mental and physical health was the lack of affordable housing, especially for the very low-income residents, many of whom lived unhoused because they do not have the means to pay for rent in the regular housing market. The state of Oregon has recognized this, and so is making available a generous grant. Good, safe housing, such as most of us here enjoy, is essential to good health. Creating Housing Coalition Small House Project addresses that need, not in a temporary way such as a shelter, but in collaboration with other agencies, such as the Lynn County Mental Health Department, in a permanent, holistic, affordable way, both in its design and ongoing rental scale, and deserves all the support that can be given to aid in its progress. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ebi. It's a pleasure seeing you, sir. Any questions for Dr. Ebi? He's the only person speaking tonight, I gotta ask the gallery. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you for coming.
Well, anyone else would like to address the council? Would you like to address the council? Okay, thank you. I'll go ahead and move on. Now, the next upon the agenda is the second reading of ordinances. City Attorney, would you please give us some clarification?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Counsel. What we have tonight are the Title VIII Property Maintenance. There's a group of ordinances that Officer Shindel had talked to us about a couple of weeks ago, and you might remember back on the 12th of this month, we had the first reading of all of these ordinances. So tonight, the second reading is automatic, but because they are ordinances, then I would ask that we vote on them separately. So I'll read one, then we'll, we'll vote on that one and go. It shouldn't take too long, even though there are a few, but we'll get through them quick.
Counsel, we go with that? That's the way we're supposed to do it today? Thank you.
All right. An ordinance submitting Albany Municipal Code AMC, Chapter 7.84, Public nuisances.
I would make a motion to adopt the ordinance as read.
Second? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Thank you.
An ordinance submitting Albany Municipal Code AMC Title VIII by the creation of Chapter 8.01, Public nuisances.
Move to adopt the ordinance as presented.
Second? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. Thank you.
An ordinance submitting Albany Municipal Code AMC Chapter VIII by the creation of Chapter 8.05, Property Maintenance.
Move for the adoption of the ordinance?
Second? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you.
An ordinance submitting Albany Municipal Code AMC Chapter VIII by the creation of Chapter 8.05, Property Maintenance.
Move for the adoption of the ordinance?
Second? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you.
An ordinance submitting Albany Municipal Code AMC Title VIII by the creation of Chapter 8.09, Portable Basketball Hoops.
Move to adopt the ordinance creating Chapter 8.09, Portable Basketball Hoops.
Second? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you.
An ordinance submitting Albany Municipal Code AMC Title VIII by the creation of Chapter 8.09, Portable Basketball Hoops.
Move for the adoption of the ordinance?
Second? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you.
An ordinance submitting Albany Municipal Code AMC Title VIII by the creation of Chapter 8.21, Chronic Nuisance Property.
Move for the adoption of the ordinance?
Second? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you.
An ordinance submitting Albany Municipal Code AMC Title VIII by the creation of Chapter 8.21, Chronic Nuisance Property. Move to adopt the ordinance.
Second?
I have a motion and a second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you.
An ordinance submitting Albany Municipal Code AMC Title VIII by the creation of Chapter 8.21, Chronic Nuisance Property. Move for the adoption of the ordinance?
Second? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you.
An ordinance submitting Albany Municipal Code AMC Title VIII by the creation of Chapter 8.21, Chronic Nuisance Property. Move for the adoption of the ordinance?
Second? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
Move to adopt the ordinance.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
An ordinance submitting Albany Municipal Code AMC Title VIII by the creation of Chapter 8.21, Chronic Nuisance Property. Move for the adoption of the ordinance?
Second? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
An ordinance submitting Albany Municipal Code AMC Title VIII by the creation of Chapter 8.21, Chronic Nuisance Property. Move to adopt the ordinance.
Second?
I have a motion and a second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you.
An ordinance submitting Albany Municipal Code AMC Title VIII by the creation of Chapter 8.21, Chronic Nuisance Property. Move for the adoption of the ordinance?
Second? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Thank you.
An ordinance submitting Albany Municipal Code AMC Title VIII by the creation of Chapter 8.21, Chronic Nuisance Property. Move for the adoption of the ordinance?
Second? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Well, anyone else would like to address the council? Would you like to address the council? Okay, thank you. I'll go ahead and move on. Now, the next upon the agenda is the second reading of ordinances. City Attorney, would you please give us some clarification?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Counsel. What we have tonight are the Title VIII Property Maintenance. There's a group of ordinances that Officer Shindel had talked to us about a couple of weeks ago, and you might remember back on the 12th of this month, we had the first reading of all of these ordinances. So tonight, the second reading is automatic, but because they are ordinances, then I would ask that we vote on them separately. So I'll read one, then we'll, we'll vote on that one and go. It shouldn't take too long, even though there are a few, but we'll get through them quick.
Counsel, we go with that? That's the way we're supposed to do it today? Thank you.
All right. An ordinance submitting Albany Municipal Code AMC, Title VIII, by the creation of Chapter 7.84, Public nuisances.
Move to adopt the ordinance as presented.
Second? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. Thank you.
An ordinance submitting Albany Municipal Code AMC, Title VIII, by the creation of Chapter 8.09, Portable Basketball Hoops.
Move to adopt the ordinance creating Chapter 8.09, Portable Basketball Hoops.
Second? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you.
An ordinance submitting Albany Municipal Code AMC, Title VIII, by the creation of Chapter 8.17, Derelict Structures.
Move for the adoption of the ordinance?
Second? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you.
An ordinance submitting Albany Municipal Code AMC, Title VIII, by the creation of Chapter 8.17, Derelict Structures. Move for the adoption of the ordinance?
Second? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you.
An ordinance submitting Albany Municipal Code AMC, Title VIII, by the creation of Chapter 8.37, City Abatement.
Move to adopt the ordinance.
Second? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
An ordinance submitting Albany Municipal Code AMC, Title VIII, by the creation of Chapter 8.21, Chronic Nuisance Property.
Move to adopt the ordinance.
Second? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 An ordinance submitting Albany Municipal Code AMC, Chapter 18.28, Dangerous Buildings, Structures, and Premises.
Move for the adoption of the ordinance?
Second? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Thank you much, Sean.
Thank you.
Next, adoption of resolutions. A is exemption of competitive bidding to purchase a generator, in parentheses, WTP, WTP 22 dash 01. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, we have a staff report.
Oh, staff report, thank you.
Or not.
I didn't see a name up here, so, well, you're, you're it.
Good evening, I'm Nolan Nelson, I'm one of the engineers for Public Works.
What's your name again?
Nolan Nelson.
Nolan, nice to meet you.
Good to meet you. It's been a while since I've been up here. We are seeking exemption from the competitive bidding process to purchase a generator from the Sourcewell Co-op. This is to provide the equipment necessary for a previously approved project, which was using ARPA funds to provide backup power at our raw water pump station. This raw water pump station, if you're unfamiliar with the system, is, sits on the San Yum River and pumps the water up to our AM Water Treatment Plant. Currently, the pump station is on a separate power grid than the treatment plant, and so there's opportunities there. If the power grid goes down on one side that we don't have the raw water, even though our AM Water Treatment Plant is functioning just fine, that we wouldn't be able to produce water. So this provides backup generator in order to continue producing water in that situation. The, we're in design currently to go outbid for the larger project, which is actually installing it. It was during design we thought it'd be advantageous to the city to purchase it ourselves, both for money reasons, because we won't have the markup as well as the long lead times right now for equipment. So this would provide the ability to finish up the design while at the same time be waiting for that equipment to show up and better work with the calendar of the treatment plant so that we can shut down at the proper time. So here for any questions if you have any.
Thank you.
Yes, will the installation be covered by ARPA funds also?
It is, it is funded the same, yes.
Any other questions, counsel? Okay. You have a motion?
I move counsel approves an exemption from competitive bidding through an existing interstate cooperative contract with Sourcewell, a governmental agency defined by the American Bar Association Model Procurement Code for state and local governments, and Cummins Inc., not to exceed 234,408.12. To purchase a Cummins 750 KVA generator and authorize the Public Works Director to enter into a contract with Cummins Inc.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you.
Item B, exemption from competitive bidding to purchase a fire engine using cooperative contract.
I think the fire chief's here today? Oh, it's not the fire chief.
Chris LaBelle Deputy Chief. Chief Wooton will speak to the next item, but I got the first one here.
Thank you.
So, good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Last month was a great one for the fire department. We were notified that we had been awarded two significant federal grants, one which was the amount of just over 642,000 to purchase a new fire engine. There is a 10% match that goes along with this, including an overmatch to beat the total cost of the engine, which will be taken out of our equipment replacement fund. The request this evening is approval to purchase the new engine from Hughes Fire Equipment located in Springfield using an existing cooperative contract with Sourcewell and Pierce Manufacturing. As stated in the memo to counsel, there are several reasons that we would like to stay with purchasing Pierce fire apparatus, but I'll just highlight two big ones. The first is our emergency operations. As stated in the council, number four of our current seven engines are manufactured by Pierce. In a profession where seconds count, having our apparatus standardized so that all emergency responders know exactly where to go to grab a certain piece of equipment can be crucial to our mission. Equally important is the knowledge the driver has with the vehicle and their understanding of how to operate the many features associated with such a complex apparatus. Our crews have trained extensively on the Pierce engines and put them to the test during actual emergencies. To switch manufacturers at this point would be a step back for our department. The last thing that I'll, I'll speak to, maintenance and minimizing vehicle maintenance or vehicle downtime. Our mechanics currently specialize in working on Pierce fire apparatus. Standardizing our fleet allows them to keep common parts on hand, which in turn gets an out-of-service vehicle back on the road quicker and back to providing service to our community. With your approval tonight, the delivery time of our new engine would be about 18 to 22 months. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions for, first, Chris?
Chris.
Italian Chief?
Deputy Chief.
Deputy Chief, Deputy Chief Chris. Any questions?
I would move for the adoption of the resolution of this Albany City Council acting as the local contract review board, approving an exemption from competitive bidding requirements and authorizing the fire chief to enter into a contract with Hughes Fire Equipment to purchase one Pierce fire engine and associated equipment, not to exceed $783,667, using a cooperative contract with Sourcewell and Pierce Manufacturing.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Next is accept the United States Department of Homeland Security.
Do it today. Thank you.
All right, an ordinance submitting Albany Municipal Code AMC, Chapter 7.84, Public nuisances.
I would make a motion to adopt the ordinance as read.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Thank you.
An ordinance submitting Albany Municipal Code AMC Title VIII by the creation of Chapter 8.01, Public nuisances.
Move to adopt the ordinance as presented.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you.
An ordinance submitting Albany Municipal Code AMC, Chapter VIII by the creation of Chapter 8.05, Property Maintenance.
Move for the adoption of the ordinance?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you.
An ordinance submitting Albany Municipal Code AMC Title VIII by the creation of Chapter 8.09, Portable Basketball Hoops.
Move to adopt the ordinance creating Chapter 8.09, Portable Basketball Hoops.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you.
An ordinance submitting Albany Municipal Code AMC Title VIII by the creation of Chapter 8.17, Derelict Structures.
Move for the adoption of the ordinance?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
An ordinance submitting Albany Municipal Code AMC Title VIII by the creation of Chapter 8.21, Chronic Nuisance Property.
Move to adopt the ordinance creating Chapter 8.21.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you.
An ordinance submitting Albany Municipal Code AMC Title VIII by the creation of Chapter 8.25, Specified Crime Property.
Move for the adoption of the ordinance?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Thank you.
An ordinance submitting Albany Municipal Code AMC Title VIII by the creation of Chapter 8.29, Hazardous Materials.
Move to adopt the ordinance?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you.
An ordinance submitting Albany Municipal Code AMC Title VIII by the creation of Chapter 8.33, Boarding Up Structures.
Move for the adoption of the ordinance?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you.
An ordinance submitting Albany Municipal Code AMC Title VIII by the creation of Chapter 8.37, City Abatement.
Move to adopt the ordinance?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
An ordinance submitting Albany Municipal Code AMC, Chapter 18.28, Dangerous Buildings, Structures, and Premises.
Move for the adoption of the ordinance?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Thank you very much, Sean.
Thank you.
Next, adoption of resolutions. A is exemption of competitive bidding to purchase a generator in parentheses, WTP 22-01. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, we have a staff report.
Oh, staff report. Thank you.
Or not.
Well, I didn't see a name up here, so. Well, you're it.
Good evening. I'm Nolan Nelson. I'm one of the engineers for Public Works.
What's your name again?
Nolan Nelson.
Nolan, nice to meet you.
Good to meet you. It's been a while since I've been up here. We are seeking exemption from the competitive bidding process to purchase a generator from the Sourcewell Co-op. This is to provide the equipment necessary for a previously approved project, which was using ARPA funds to provide backup power at our raw water pump station. This raw water pump station, if you're unfamiliar with the system, sits on the San Yam River and pumps the water up to our AM Water Treatment Plant. Currently, the pump station is on a separate power grid than the treatment plant, and so there's opportunities there. The power grid goes down on one side that we don't have the raw water, even though our AM Water Treatment Plant is functioning just fine, that we wouldn't be able to produce water. So this provides backup generator in order to continue producing water in that situation. We're in design currently to go outbid for the larger project, which is actually installing it. It was during design, we thought it'd be advantageous to the city to purchase it ourselves, both for money reasons, because we won't have the markup as well as the long lead times right now for equipment. So this would provide the ability to finish up the design while at the same time be waiting for that equipment to show up and better work with the calendar of the treatment plant so that we can shut down at the proper time. So here for any questions if you have any.
Thank you.
Yes, will the installation be covered by ARPA funds also?
It is. It is funded the same, yes.
Any other questions, counsel? Okay. You have a motion?
I move counsel approves an exemption from competitive bidding through an existing interstate cooperative contract with Sourcewell, a governmental agency defined by the American Bar Association Model Procurement Code for state and local governments, and Cummins Inc. not to exceed 234,408.12 to purchase a Cummins 750 KVA generator and authorize the Public Works Director to enter into a contract with Cummins Inc.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you. Item B, exemption from competitive bidding to purchase a fire engine using cooperative contract. I think the fire chief's here today. Oh, it's not the fire chief.
Chris LaBelle Deputy Chief. Chief Wooton will speak to the next item, but I got the first one here.
Thank you.
So, good evening, Mayor and counsel. Last month was a great one for the fire department. We were notified that we had been awarded two significant federal grants, one which was the amount of just over 642,000 to purchase a new fire engine. There is a 10% match that goes along with this, including an overmatch to beat the total cost of the engine, which will be taken out of our equipment replacement fund. The request this evening is approval to purchase the new engine from Hughes Fire Equipment located in Springfield using an existing cooperative contract with Sourcewell and Pierce Manufacturing. As stated in the memo to counsel, there are several reasons that we would like to stay with purchasing Pierce fire apparatus, but I'll just highlight two big ones. The first is our emergency operations. As stated in the council number four of our current seven engines are manufactured by Pierce. In a profession where seconds count, having our apparatus standardized so that all emergency responders know exactly where to go to grab a certain piece of equipment can be crucial to our mission. Equally important is the knowledge the driver has with the vehicle and their understanding of how to operate the many features associated with such a complex apparatus. Our crews have trained extensively on the Pierce engines and put them to the test during actual emergencies. To switch manufacturers at this point would be a step back for our department. The last thing that I'll speak to, maintenance and minimizing vehicle maintenance or vehicle downtime. Our mechanics currently specialize in working on Pierce fire apparatus. Standardizing our fleet allows them to keep common parts on hand, which in turn gets an out-of-service vehicle back on the road quicker and back to providing service to our community. With your approval tonight, the delivery time of our new engine would be about 18 to 22 months. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions for? First, Chris.
Chris.
Italian chief?
Deputy chief.
Deputy chief. Deputy chief, Chris. Any questions?
I say I would move for the adoption of the resolution of this Albany City Council acting as the local contract review board approving an exemption from competitive bidding requirements and authorizing the fire chief to enter into a contract with Hughes Fire Equipment to purchase one Pierce fire engine and associated equipment not to exceed $783,667 using a cooperative contract with Sourcewell and Pierce Manufacturing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next is accept the United States Department of Homeland Security 2021 Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Grant. Let me see, fire chief Wooton. Good evening, chief.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, council staff. A bit of background for those online or maybe here in the audience. The U.S. Department of Homeland Security offers a grant titled Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response, also known as SAFER. This grant helps fire departments meet the standards set forth in the National Fire Protection Association, so I'm throwing out a lot of acronyms at you, NFPA, specifically NFPA 1710, which sets standards for fire departments, equipment, and our response. One piece of the standard recommends that we have four firefighters on our ladder truck, and currently we only have three. Let's see here. We only have three, thus the department wrote the grant specific to the standard and how the additional staffing will aid in meeting the staffing goal for the ladder truck response. The department has applied for the grant multiple times over the last decade, and this is the third time we've been chosen for it. Mayor, council, in January you authorized the fire department to apply for the SAFER grant, which covers 100% of the cost for three years. Our grant application identified two primary purposes for the grant. One is to improve the percentage of time that we have a fourth person assigned to the ladder truck, which is currently nearly zero, and to also help reduce the amount of overtime the department incurs. In addition, the additional firefighters will slightly reduce the wear and tear on our employees that's a result of our record call volume and demands for providing the ambulance service to our community. In the past, and Counselor Olson, I think it might have been you, the council had concerns about the real possibility of not being able to retain the position in future budgets and then having to navigate the sticky and often complicated path of reducing the number of firefighter positions. While I believe we'll be able to absorb these positions just through normal attrition, to help ease the council's concern, we've worked with human resources, our labor attorney, as well as the bargaining unit, and we've memorialized the conversation with the bargaining unit that these positions are not considered permanent and are not included in our minimum staffing. We wanted to make clear to everyone, so there's no, so nobody has any unrealistic expectations three years from now. If we are approved to accept the grant, our goal is to have the new position start this January. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Counselor Novak, you have a question?
No, sir.
Oh, I thought you were looking over. Anyone else have a question? You good?
Answered mine.
Do I have a motion?
I move counsel accept $1,332,378 from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security 2021 Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response SAFER Grant CFDA Number 97.083 to hire three firefighter slash EMTs.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Next is the award of a contract Utility Billing Management Software. Who's going to do that report? Somebody else?
Good evening, counsel. I'm Luke Cotton, IT Project Manager for the City of Albany.
Can't hear you.
Sorry. Let me get a little bit closer. Luke Cotton, IT Project Manager for the City of Albany. The city went through a process to do an RFP for a replacement of our utility billing management system. Our current system is end of life, is nearing end of support, end of contract. It's, needs to be replaced. And so we went through the process. We had nine responsive companies submit proposals. We whittled that down to four and moved those four forward. We evaluated each one of them and ended up with ETEC 360 as our accepted proposer, and the contract is going to be a five-year term with, or the proposal, the resolution, five-year term with a one-year agreements going forward for up to 10 years total.
Excuse me, does that include training?
That includes onsite training, yes.
So, counsel, Counselor Kupczynski?
Yes, not having, I don't recognize the names of any of the potential people applying. Do any of them have any experience with organizations in our area or in Oregon that you're aware of, that you can say they've got good recommendations?
ETEC 360 actually is the one of this group that has, is incorporated in California. They also have had an office. I think they're working on an office in Medford, Oregon. So of all these companies, they've worked with a lot of different utility companies, a lot in gas, some electric, and then of course, water and sewer.
Any other questions, counsel? I have a motion.
I move we accept the proposal on awarding a contract to ETEC-360, Inc., and authorizing the Public Works Director to enter into a contract with ETEC-360, Inc., DBA 360 S2G for Utility Billing Management System.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you very much. Next, adoption of a consent calendar.
I'd move to adopt the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you. Next, we have staff reports. It would be citizen advisory groups, CAGs, optimization.
Thank you, Mayor. Peter is obviously out, but this is the discussion that the council had on Monday regarding the citizen advisory groups. Mary has made the changes the council requested from the work session on Monday, and the documents were sent to you in the supplemental agenda, so you should have those. And with that, we can answer any questions. Otherwise, the documents should be ready for your discussion and vote.
Counselors, do you have any questions? Go ahead, Counselor Novak.
So this is the time to discuss, correct? If we have discussion, is that what you just said?
Yes, we don't have a further staff report.
Okay, thank you. So having reviewed some information from September 28th, CAG Optimization Discussion, at 2 hours, 2 minutes, and 22 seconds in, Mary Dibble summed up the council recommendation, and we had consensus with regard to TLT that the group would be seven members in total and would include representatives from TLT and the Airport Commission on the New Economic Development Advisory Commission. The discussion was completed at 2 hours, 5 minutes, and 2 seconds, and that somehow sort of didn't translate into the discussion that we had Monday night. So I wanted to bring that back to everyone's attention because I would still like to see seven members and have a representative from TLT and the Airport Commission. Although I do very much appreciate the fact that the wording was altered to include the fact that we counselors can put people forward on the EDAC and not just give an up or down vote with people that Peter and staff present to us. So I'm grateful for that, but.
The TLT Commission and the Airport Commission aren't brought forward for any changes. So regarding adding people to the Airport Commission, we aren't proposing any changes to that commission right now. I think Seth and Matthew are here to discuss how we wound up where we are with the Economic Development Commission. I didn't participate in that discussion Monday, but maybe Seth or Matthew can clarify that.
Forgive me if I was unclear, but that's not exactly what I said. I didn't talk about making changes to the Airport Commission and the TLT Advisory Commission.
Oh, I thought you had.
The discussion, the discussion that we had on the 28th upon review was that we had a consensus of the people in the room that we wanted to have representation from the TLT and the Airport Advisory Commission on the Economic Development Board.
Sorry.
The new EDAC, that's all right.
Counselor Smith?
I think that, I remember the discussion as well, and I believe that that was directed at including TLT member, TLT member or an Airport Commission member if we were going to blend those commissions into the new Economic Development Commission. That's not what's being recommended now. It's being recommended to keep those two organizations separate from the Economic Development Commission. So they would, no changes to them, they would not need to be included in the Economic Development Commission, the new one.
That's what we talked about Monday.
Yeah.
I'll just sit down then if you, unless there's any more questions.
I just want to make sure TLT still has input and say in our economic situation in Albany.
Well, the TLT will then feed information to the council. They will not be part of the Economic Development Commission because it's very specific to what we need to do for the city to move forward. Go ahead, Counselor Olson.
By the same token, when the EDAC is formed, then we have the opportunity to advocate for or promote anybody to be on that committee.
That's what I'm referring to. That's what I'm saying.
But we're not, we're not carving out a specific space for somebody from TLTs per se, but we can advocate for them to be one of the members on the committee because of their expertise.
Thank you. My, I'm sorry. I don't mean to cut you off.
No, you're not cutting me off.
I just, my, went on Monday when we had that discussion, and when we had the discussion on the 28th, I left under the impression that we were going to have actual representation from someone on TLT on the newly formed Economic Development Commission, which we now know as EDAC. So I was surprised that we didn't have that, and I reviewed some information and thought, yep, I thought we had a consensus there that we were going to put someone forward to be part of that group, and it would have seven members. Five seems a little tight to me. I'm hopeful that we could have seven and that the way things will work out is that someone from TLT who has that kind of knowledge and expertise can be part of that group.
Go ahead, Counselor Johnson.
Okay. So in the end, what did we decide? Five or seven?
It was five.
Five.
We're going five.
Five, okay.
And Mayor, if I might just add briefly, I was thinking about this a little bit because, you know, the reason I came to speak with you on Monday was because we didn't have a chance to have some back and forth and talk a little bit about the purpose and strategy when the idea of a TLT member was put forward, again, without much back and forth. And I think Peggy, Alex or Mayor Johnson, you had suggested Peggy Burris, and I love Peggy, but I was thinking about her role in a group like that when she's the, she's been on the TLT Committee for some time.
No, I know, but I don't remember.
When we're talking about strategies for bringing infrastructure to do land development and publicly held wetland banks and funding strategies for massive projects, this is the kind of thing that we're talking about where the EDAC plays a really pivotal role. It does not determine a strategy for the community, which may include promoting tourism, which it does most definitely currently, and I suspect it will continue to. So again, this doesn't cut anyone's representation out or the strategy that the council will determine as being prudent for the community to follow. It's just that those seats have a specific role. When you think about the challenges around physical development, again, not excluding anybody, but that's the role, and I think Peggy probably would probably say that that's not her wheelhouse either.
Thank you. Counsel, what'd you like to do? So we've actually jumped ahead to C, and so let's go ahead and, oh, excuse me, number four on the four items. So anybody that can make, do we have to do those individually? We should, right?
So we'll do them individually, and tonight's the first reading, so it's automatic, and then we'll decide if we want to have a second reading.
Okay.
Based on if we have a unanimous vote or not.
So go ahead and read, please.
Okay.
An ordinance submitting the sections of Albany Municipal Code AMC Title II, Administration and Personnel That Relate to Citizen Advisory Groups, Creating AMC 2.21, Title Parks, Recreation, and Tree Advisory Commission by combining the Parks and Recreation Commission and the City Tree Commission, Adopting a Charter Title Parks, Recreation, and Tree Advisory Commission Charter as an Exhibit in Order to Provide Guidance and Repealing AMC Chapter 2.20, Parks and Recreation Commission, and AMC Chapter 2.23, City Tree Commission.
I move that the ordinance be read a second time in title only.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
Go ahead, Sean.
Okay.
And this will be the second, or the first reading of the second ordinance that we're, which will be on your number two, item number two.
An ordinance submitting the sections of Albany Municipal Code AMC Title II, Administration and Personnel That Relate to Citizen Advisory Groups, Renaming AMC 2.32 for a new commission titled Transportation Advisory Commission, and combining the duties of the Traffic Safety Commission and the duties of the Albany Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission as set forth in Resolution Numbers 3185, 3314, 4161, and 5721, and adopting a charter titled Transportation Advisory Commission as an Exhibit in Order to Provide Guidance.
Move to read the ordinance a second time in title only.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
Mayor, since we are not reading that ordinance a second time in title only, we should skip item three?
I totally agree.
Okay.
So read number four, please, city attorney.
That's a resolution on that one, Your Honor, so we wouldn't need to read that one.
Number four is a resolution?
Yep.
Reading new economic development?
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay. So, okay. Did it come back the next council meeting? Okay. So next item is item B, Senate Bill 5561, funding requests.
Mayor, was there a motion on item four?
That's what I was waiting for. I thought he was going to read it. It's just a resolution, right?
Right, it's just a resolution. So I don't know if anybody's going to just.
So anybody that can make a motion on item four?
Help me with that one. Are those resolutions necessary if we're not doing, if we're not moving beyond the second reading of the ordinances?
The item three would, we would not want to read tonight since we're not moving forward with item two, but I believe, let's see.
Item four is a standalone.
Resolution by itself.
Right, so that one could, could go ahead if you wanted to.
Okay.
But item three would repeal the Bike-Ped Commission when you haven't yet created the new commission, so we don't want to do that.
Yes, I agree.
So that's why we skipped item three.
Okay.
But item four is a standalone.
Resolution.
Commission for the Economic Development Advisory Commission.
So we have a, we have a motion on the item four?
I would move the adoption of the resolution creating the Economic Development Advisory Commission and adopting a charter titled Economic Development Advisory Commission as an Exhibit in Order to Provide Guidance.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
I'm very much opposed to this.
No.
I'm saying no.
I'd like further discussion is all.
Motion passes four to two. Thank you. Next, item B, Senate Bill 5561, funding requests.
Mayor? I need to recuse myself as per previous.
Yes. So with that, let's take a five-minute break.
Okay.
I need a bio break, I'm just saying. Let's get a five-minute break, please.
What for?
Got to take...
So, please. And Planner Anne Catlin is going to speak to us about Senate Bill 5561 funding requests.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilors. For the benefit of those that may not have.
Excuse me. Thank you.
I've not heard about this Senate bill before. This is a Senate bill that was passed in a special legislative session last year that allocated a million dollars to 14 cities in Oregon. Albany was one of those with the purpose to address homelessness, housing insecurity, and affordable housing needs within the community. And we went through an application process and the Community Development Commission, on behalf of the council, reviewed those applications and made a recommendation. And at the last council meeting, there was a motion, but there weren't enough votes for that to pass. Since that last meeting, well, the mayor asked me to communicate with Dev Northwest about whether they would be willing to accept a lower amount. They have withdrawn their application. They do need the full $750,000. It's a stretch in this market for them to do the kind of magnitude of a project that they would do. And they also want to come into a community with majority council support for that project. And they will be working to earn trust and hope to do a project here in the future. So with that, we ask you to go ahead and please make a recommendation so we can bring those formally back. And if there are remaining funds, which there should be remaining funds, we recommend they be set aside for future opportunities, which there are some possibilities. I will say, a very good one has just come about that has the same wow factor, I think, as Dev Northwest. So with that, I will let you.
So I do have one question as far as how long, how big is the window for us to make a decision or have that money allocated?
Well, so we report to the state until the money is spent. And then we report on those performance measures. The language in the bill itself had the word urgency in it, but it's mostly that we want to try to address any current needs that are out there. So there isn't a specific deadline to spend the money, but the sooner it gets out there, the sooner we have more homeowners, home opportunities along the spectrum.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, council. Council Novak?
I have a question for you, Anne. You mentioned that something has just newly come up that has the same wow factor, to quote you, as Dev Northwest. Is, can we get some information on that?
Yeah, sure. It, well, there, there is a nonprofit organization that has closed on a property in Albany. And they, we can ask them if they would be interested in making a presentation to you. It is not a homeownership project, but it is, it would fill needed housing, rental housing project.
I'd like more information.
Well, the Community Development Commission hasn't got their application yet.
Well.
Haven't done any research on them yet.
You could decide whether or not you want to just get the application. We could talk about that process. And I would love to get that input tonight if you want to open up an application process and we kind of start this over again, or if there are opportunities. As they arise, we look at this funding. I'm not sure if there are other opportunities besides the one that I know about.
It'd be nice to get the application in and have it reviewed by City Committee Development and brought to council. I think that'd be a good first step, yes.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
I listened to the meetings, you know, on YouTube. Can you tell me the three that we decided on? I know the Creative Housing Coalition and Albany Habitat. And for some reason, I'm going blank on the third one.
It was Dev Northwest. Those were the recommendations from the Community Development Commission for the projects.
Habitat's the man who, she's asking what the other one was.
Habitat, oh, oh, it was Habitat for Humanity, Creating Housing Coalition, and Dev Northwest were recommended by the Community Development Commission. The other two applications came from Albany Helping Hands and Jackson Street Youth Services.
Yeah. I guess I wonder, with everything going on with Helping Hands right now, if we, you know, if we want to keep on going with that, I'm not sure. But because of the proclamation tonight with the extra money that we have left, I still think that the Jackson Street Youth Center is a good project that we could help support. Because, like I said, you know, the homeless on the street, they're older, they can, you know, they can deal with it. These kids have nothing. They have nowhere to go. And, you know, I think that they're getting at least some training and some help with that. And it's really important. I mean, to me, I can just see them getting the help to keep going, or at least get a start somewhere. But the Helping Hands is one kind of I wonder about right now. Because I don't know what's going on, if they're, you know.
Ongoing.
Yeah, it is. And if we're going to give, give them money to expand, it's like, okay.
We didn't say that. We didn't say that we're giving money to Helping Hands. We didn't say we're giving money, we haven't allocated the funds, to my knowledge. All we had was a presentation from the commission saying, here's what we think would be a good idea for the funds. And in the interim, Dev Northwest has bowed out. And then tonight, you just said that there's another entity whose name we don't know, who you're excited about, that I personally would like more information on. And you seem to say, Mr. Mayor, that you wanted some information as well.
The job of the Community Development Commission is to bring that to you.
Yes, I understand.
Go ahead.
Well, it's council's decision on how you want to go about making that decision. I think that your recommendation to use the Community Development Commission was accepted, but it's really up to you to decide. It isn't a requirement because these are not the funds that the Community Development Commission normally works with, the Community Development Block Grant Fund. So you can do whatever you like. We just like your direction so that we can make sure that happens.
Well, could you have them come and do a presentation?
Yep.
Would you guys like that?
I would. I've asked twice now.
Counselor, Counselor Kupczynski?
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we fund Habitat for Humanity, Creative Housing Coalition, and Jackson Street and hold the balance of the money for additional opportunities that come about, however they come about.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Do we need to have some discussion for that first?
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay, so you're taking out, I thought we had three that we were going to go with.
Dev Northwest withdrew.
They withdrew.
Yeah, I know that. I know that. So that left two. Okay, all right.
So that brought, that meant room for Jackson.
Oh, exactly.
Well, Jackson Street, is it for work that they've already done though, right?
It's ongoing operations.
No, is it ongoing operations?
Yes, or ongoing services.
And that might be used for that?
They, they initially applied for funding to help offset the expansion project, which has already been paid for. And we really can't use funds to help with debt, right? So they submitted an application for operations. I will say that we provide Community Development Block Grant Funds to help with our operations every year. Those funds are limited, so it isn't enough. And I think they were trying to make a case that with the larger facility, that they do have more staffing needs. But their initial intent was to help retire some of, I mean, just.
They can't pay off that much money.
For that campaign, but.
So it would still be okay to fund them?
For, for operations.
Yes.
Yeah, we just would, yeah, track the operation expenses if you want to do that.
Yeah, because we normally wouldn't do, we really wouldn't fund ONM operations, would we? I mean, is, is that what this is?
Normally wouldn't have this money.
What?
We normally wouldn't have this money.
But the intent of the money was, the intent of the money was to build space, right? The intent of the bill was to build space, correct?
It, it was very purposely vague. It was to address homelessness, housing affordability, and housing insecurity. It's very different. These are funds that we wish we had all the time because there aren't as many strings attached or requirements as, as the federal funds.
It's a small amount and I have no problem supporting it.
Exactly.
There are a lot of funds available to address homelessness and more possibly coming, maybe with the next legislative session. So you might consider whether to reserve some of these funds for projects that may have a harder time finding funds that might be more available to address homelessness. I mean, that's just something to think about, or whether you want to consider another applicant.
We'll still have funds left over even if we fund all three of these to do that.
$225,000 would be left over if we, if we funded all of these at the level that they've requested.
But again, you did mention someone new and you said you would bring information to us.
Right. That's what I'm hoping.
I would like that information.
That still can be, that still can come down the road.
Well, I still struggle with funding an organization that's being investigated by the DOJ as well.
We're not talking about funding them. That's not on the table.
Have you just submitted that, didn't you?
No.
Jackson Street.
That was it?
Yeah.
I thought I heard Albany Helping Hands. Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Well, Habitat's fine. I'm good with that.
So Anne, how much money for these three that Counselor Kupczynski said? How much does it come to?
The total would come to 850,000. Oh, no, it would come to, I, I didn't bring my memo up. There'd be $225,000 left, so that would be.
775.
Yes, 7,000, $775,000 total.
Okay, so we still have 275 left.
And another option that you haven't talked about is partially funding. I mean, you know, you haven't heard from another applicant.
Right.
All of the applicants, I mean, they all, they have great projects. But if you're wanting to figure out how to fund more opportunities in the city, you could partially fund some of these applications or fully fund some, partially fund others. It's, you have discretion to do what.
I think we should look at all four of them, even the new one, and then come back with maybe partially. Well, we have a new one and the three others we talked about.
Let's get these three done and then the new one can come in and apply for funding that's left over.
Yeah, I agree.
I'd like to get these, get this going for these three.
Yeah, we're spending way too much time on it.
I'm a Smith, you.
Call for the question.
Go ahead.
If I could just add a little bit, the, the other project that Anne's talking about, while they've secured property, we don't have an actual land use application on it yet. They've kind of gone through a pre-application process, so it's still, our pre-application processes are semi-confidential. So that's why we're, we're not, we're not trying to be, you know, kind of cloak and dagger here. We're just not trying to put out a bunch of information that they may not necessarily want out right now. So what, you know, a recommendation could be that if the current motion on the floor, that if that was something the council was interested in entertaining, there would still be $225,000 that you could set aside. And when that application actually came in and we had something concrete, certainly could have them come and do a presentation for the CDC, if that's the path that council wants to choose. And then from there, they could also do a presentation for council, so.
So there's no rush for that next group?
No.
Are you comfortable with that?
There is no rush for any of it, from what I understand, except for the fact that we have people waiting to get started on projects. That's where the rush comes in.
Correct.
We need to move forward, so, yes.
You're the council.
I would call for the question.
Okay.
No motion?
Anne seconded.
Second?
It's been motioned and seconded.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no?
I'm wondering if Anne has anything more to suggest that we consider in this.
Do you want to finish the vote, or?
Yeah, let's go, let's go ahead and finish the vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no?
Well, I'm thinking I'll vote no.
That's four to one?
Can we get a roll call, please?
Can we roll call, please?
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Olson?
No.
Counselor Novak?
Yes.
Counselor Bartholomew? Oh, I'm sorry, she's recused. Counselor Kupczynski?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
That's four to one and one recused.
Thank you.
So just some clarification, Mayor. Once we do have some concrete information, we'll, we'll be in touch. We can talk to council and see just specifically how you'd like to, if they're interested, how you'd like to move forward with that.
Okay.
If that's through the CDC or direct to council, if that works for you.
So I'm hoping they'll go, because there's no rush, we don't know who they are yet. I say we use the standard process like we do the others, have them come to CDC, make recommendations, come to council, and while, they can do a presentation like the other ones did. Works for me. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We have business from the council who would like to go first. Counselor Bartholomew, please join us. So Counselor Johnson, want to start us off today?
Yes, the only, I was going to bring something up, but I think I'll just wait. But I do want to say that, I think it's in our, in our codes or in our charter that we are to have a public safety person here for our meetings, and we do not. And I think that, that is something that we need in this, in this times we're living in. We just need them. And they've always been there in the past. So I think it's something that somehow we need to work with Chief Harndon and see what we can do.
Thank you very much, Counselor.
And that's, I think that's all for right. Thank you.
Let's go over here to Counselor Kupczynski.
Nothing tonight.
Counselor Bartholomew?
Thank you very much, Your Honor, and thank you for putting us out of our misery. So, my group. My, I, I know that we had a proclamation recognizing Native American, Native American peoples, but sometimes those proclamations seem to be insufficient. And especially in this case, because the only reason we're here is because they're not. And so I'd like to acknowledge, do a land acknowledgement and recommend that land acknowledgements be part of our process in the future. And so, with your permission, Mayor, we want to offer gratitude for the land in this state called Oregon, for those who've cared for it throughout generations, and for the opportunity to grow, learn, work, and create community on this land. We respectfully acknowledge and honor all Indigenous communities throughout time and into the future, and are grateful for their vibrant presence. We acknowledge that our offices here are on the ancestral lands of the following Indigenous peoples: Leukemut, Kalapuya, Santiam, Chepanaha, and San Coopie. We extend our respect to the nine federally recognized Indigenous nations of Oregon: the Klamath, Burns, Paiute, Kokil, Confederated Tribes of Grand Rhond, Cow Creek Band of Umpqua Indians, Confederated Tribes of Yumatilla, Confederated Tribes of Soletz, Confederated Tribes of Kooz, Lower Umpqua, and Sussla, and the Confederated Tribes of Warm Springs. Additionally, we acknowledge all their tribes who have traditional connections to these lands and displaced Indigenous peoples who reside in Oregon. These Indigenous peoples have enduring and current relationships with the land, including public lands and spaces where cities, towns, farms, ranches, and timberlands have been built and managed by settlers. We recognize that Native communities were forcibly removed from the land where we now reside and the continuation of harmful colonial legacies. We recognize that a land acknowledgement is an evolving and persistent process focused on facilitating continued learning and growth.
Thank you. Counselor Smith?
Thank you, Counselor Bartholomew. I was reminded of land acknowledgements at the League of Oregon Cities Conference two weeks ago and realized that that was a gap in our procedures. So thanks very much for mentioning that. I can't top that. Thank you.
Counselor Novak?
I want to say, first of all, that I agree with what Counselor Johnson mentioned with regard to safety in meetings like this where we have always had a safety officer. And we don't, and I don't know why. I think in these times, I would agree that I would feel safer with a safety officer. And I hope that that will be part of our meetings really soon, like the next one. I have a follow-up from a constituent, and it has to do with crime in North Albany. I have been waiting for Chief Harndon to be here, to bring this when she is here. And she hasn't been here for the last couple of meetings, so I guess I'll just go ahead and share it now so it's on the record, and I'm sure she can bring attention to it.
Director Bailey, take it back to her.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So I'll go ahead. We want to know specifically how much more crime we have in North Albany and whether or not the Albany Police Department, which I'm happy, we're all happy, they've been able to hire more officers. And so we want to know if they're increasing patrols accordingly because this was specific to a development on Hickory, a low-income development. And my constituent would like further information, as would I, since that's the ward I represent. So if we could get more information on how much more crime we have in North Albany and, and whether or not they are policing accordingly now that we have more officers.
More crime since what time period?
It's with the development of North Albany, with all the increased housing and the low-income housing, especially specific to a low housing, low-income housing development on Hickory.
I agree.
Thank you. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Olson?
Nothing.
Thank you. Couple things. We have, for the remainder of the year, we have three city council meetings left for this year. And other than that, my granddaughter will be here shortly. I'm hoping by Monday or Tuesday I'll give you good news. My first granddaughter, so I'm a little tripping out over that. But I'm excited about it, and that's pretty much it.
Is somebody going to get spoiled here shortly?
Oh, she's going to be really, really spoiled, trust me on that. And I'm excited for her to be here. And my grandson is six, but having a little granddaughter is going to be amazing. My wife's and the mother, the mother-in-law's already going off on it. And thank you, Marilyn, for the gift. And other than that, I think we're done. City manager's report?
Not much, Mayor. Just that the next work session on November 7th, we currently don't have any items scheduled, so we might be canceling that if nothing comes up. But we will be having the November 9th meeting.
It's my wife's birthday. You're killing me.
Sorry.
So with that, our next meeting dates are possibly, maybe not, November 7th at 2022, on 22nd, excuse me, 2022, at 4:00 p.m. for a work session. And possibly Wednesday night, November 9th, at 6:00 p.m. And with that, I'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you.